Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 24th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'm Planning and Zoning Chairman, Commission Chair James Kirkpatrick. At this time, I'd like to ask that all cell phones and electronic devices be turned off. Or put on silent. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. For those of you that have not been with us before, the Planning and Zoning Commission is comprised of seven members, five members of residents of the city of Burlington and are appointed by the City Council. Two members are residents of the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction and are appointed by the Alamance County Commissioners. For tonight's public comments, to address the Commission in this meeting, please wait until called upon by the Chair and address the Commission from the podium. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes, and anyone who speaks must give their name and address for the record. Press, media, you can ask questions to the Commission during the public comment period. As a reminder, the Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory body and makes recommendations to the City Council. No decisions are final at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. Additionally, in the event of a tie vote, three to three, the motion fails. I'd like to confirm that all Commission members and staff members on the agenda are present. Staff, please conduct a roll call of the Commission and staff.
Chair Kirkpatrick?
President.
Vice Chair Easely?
Here.
Member Brown?
Here.
Member Mills?
Present.
Member Spadacini?
Here.
Member Reina?
Present.
Alternate Member Hill?
Here.
And alternate Member Sandristir. And alternate Member Britton is absent. He's out.
Thank you. First item on the agenda. First, is there a conflict? Anybody have a conflict?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
We've got to get there first, buddy. I asked about a conflict. We're getting there first.
Okay.
Anybody got a conflict? No? Now.
So moved.
Approval of the minutes. You've moved second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four. Conditional rezoning 25-002. Mr. Sam Unsworth, applicant to present a request to amend the existing conditional office and institutional, COI 884A, district. The property is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and Collins Drive, addressed as 918 Chapel Hill Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 132235. Mr. Unsworth, what say you, sir?
My name is Sam Unsworth. I'm with Mast and Commercial Real Estate, and I represent for Thought Care, formerly known as Hospice of Alamance and Cavil. Mr. Dal Rose here with Thought Care, if you have any questions to him. Basically, what we wanted to do is amend the conditional zoning that is in place now because during COVID, a lot of the office staff and medical help worked from home. And since then, it has continued to where they are working, still working from home. So they basically have a 10,000-square-foot office building and a 2,000-square-foot house that they'd like to lease to others of a like-kind industry to them. And the current zoning would not allow that, so we're here to ask for your approval on the conditional zoning that has been recommended.
Okay. Sounds pretty simple.
It is to me.
So included on the PowerPoint that's hopefully on your screens and displayed, there were two separate rezoning requests. The first one was to change the zoning to allow for the hospice care and palliative care facility. You can see that it was specifically limited to hospital medical offices, and those were intended to be specifically for and to support the hospice and palliative care. Then, and that was in 17, then in 22, there was an amendment to the original conditional industrial, conditional office and institutional, rather, to allow for an expansion, to allow 5,000-square-foot addition for a welcome center and additional beds. So that essentially is what exists on the paper today for this particular site, and it's a large complex. So the applicant has requested an amendment to the conditional rezoning to separate out the office uses, so the paper will no longer have to be specifically tied to the palliative and hospice care, that the space could be rented to others.
Any questions from the Commission?
Okay, one more time. Is what, the conditional use that Sam is requesting now is to, it could be something other than the palliative care facility, or would it be in line with that? Would it be the same?
It'll be like-kind.
Like-kind, okay.
Like medical services from, it may not necessarily support authoritative care, but there will be a medical-type service that you would lease it to. Is that?
Professionals or?
Right.
Medical or?
Sure, please.
Yeah, so we do a lot of different things, right? We do home health services. We do counseling, grief counseling. So we do a lot of different things. At Thought Care, we have just not just hospice care and palliative. We offer a range of services. So we would just like someone in the building that doesn't coincide with what we do, what our beliefs are, but not that they would directly support our mission. They can have their own mission. We just need to make sure that it's in line with our vision and our mission. And that's what we're asking for.
Does that answer your question, Mike?
Yes, so they will, they will report to, or you will have some control of who goes in?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We say yes or no, and we've already declined one company that we didn't feel like was aligned with our values and beliefs.
Essentially, you're acting as a landlord in this particular case.
Yes.
Of the 5,000 square foot.
Yes, we are. So Phillips Foundation owns 50% of us, and Con Hospital owns 50% of us. And so all of our buildings are donated or fundraised. And so we're just looking to rent this building out to further the foundation and the work that we do in the community.
Everybody good on this side?
Yes, sir.
Here? Anything? I would just like to tell you that you're, I don't know of anybody in Alamance County that probably hasn't been touched by your organization in some way, shape, or form. I think what you do is amazing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for what you do for our community.
Very proud of your work.
Any further discussion, any question? For the staff? Everybody's read the staff's recommendation, I presume?
Staff is recommending approval. You see also on the slide that this area is within the traditional residential, future land use designation. This will expand the uses of the property to no longer specifically be tied to that umbrella, but will expand it out. So in that essence, staff recommends that this is not consistent with the future land use designation, but does also recommend the rezoning.
Without any further discussion or any further questions?
So that would be option number two in your consistency.
Right.
Make a motion?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to recommend approval of the request to amend the existing conditional office and institutional, COI 884A, district. This property is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and Collins Drive, addressed as 918 Chapel Hill Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 132235. The motion is based upon the inconsistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan, and that the future land use map in Section 4, land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be traditional residential. The current zoning of the property and neighboring parcels are inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The request is incompatible with the land use plan. The proposed amendment supports the existing hospice and palliative care facility. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing use of the property and other non-residential zoning and land uses in the area. Any future development will be required to comply with the city's unified development ordinance. It allows the opportunity for additional professional office, medical office, and sales and service office to occur on the subject property.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Can we roll call the vote, please?
Sure. Chair Kirkpatrick?
Approve.
Vice Chair Easely?
Approve.
Member Brown?
Approve.
Member Mills?
Approve.
Member Spadacini?
Approve.
And Member Reina?
Approve.
We can also include Ms. Hill.
Approve, yeah. Thank you.
She shows up, she gets the fuck.
I have to say something, right?
Of course. So you're all, you're all set?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sam.
See you later.
You too.
Thanks, man.
Of course. Have a good night.
Hey, Chad.
I'm up.
Yeah, not to put any pressure on you, but we knocked that out in 12 minutes.
That was pretty impressive. You're on your game. All right. Can you drive for me? Is that good? Okay, great. Very good. Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm Chad. I'm with Co-Red Planners, and I have been y'all's co-drafter of record for many, many years now. I'm not even quite sure how many, six, seven years, something like that. In any case, I'm here before you tonight with UVO text amendment 125, which is every so often, and I know we're kind of out of practice, so I'm sorry that it's been so long. You recall, last year, we had one teeny tiny little set of amendments dealing with water, by watershed, but I'm happy to report that we're back in business. So tonight, if you please go ahead, we are on our 15th round of amendments. So we have definitely put this ordinance through its paces. Jamie has a lot of new staff members, and they are wonderful. And we have several things to adjust and change, but we will move through them very, very quickly. The majority of tonight's material deals with session laws from 2023 and 2024. Recall that the General Assembly passes planning-related legislation every year, and local governments are obliged to follow those provisions. And so the majority of what's on our docket tonight is session law change. So we've got about 48 areas of revision. We've organized them into four sets of changes. We'll talk first about session law. We'll talk about some changes to some of the development standards in Chapter 6, some changes to improve clarity based on what we've heard from staff thus far, and then a couple of new uses that we're suggesting be integrated. So what we've got here, what's a little bit different with this presentation? I often include for you guys pages with all the red lines. I see that everybody has packets, hopefully, that have the red line changes in them that cite the page numbers down at the bottom, because that's what we'll use to organize ourselves. So I'm going to jump in. As always, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. Our first change deals with battery-charged security fences, okay? Pair of session laws, one in 2023 and one in 2024, that basically preempts local government regulation of battery-charged security fences, okay? And so we made a couple of changes to the fence permit section on Pages 236 and the fence standards in 4-74. And here's the bottom line. Essentially, if somebody on a non-residential piece of property wants to have a battery-charged security fence, they may do so, and you may not stop them, and they do not need to get a permit to do this. There is one or two caveats. The first is that that battery-charged security fence must be surrounded by a second fence that is not battery-charged. It must be at least five feet tall. The security fence may not be taller than seven feet, okay? So that's basically the gist of this regulation. With all state preemptions, we can talk about it all you like, but this is the law of the land, and the General Assembly has told us this is what we need to do. So we've incorporated those in round one, okay? Second session law change deals with family-child care homes. Those are homes where children receive care. They may live there. They may just receive care there. Our current standards allow up to nine. In 2023, that threshold was increased to 10, okay? So now we're talking about up to 10 children at a family-child care home. Session law 202449, for those of you who pay close attention, we've had over the last five years or so, great changes in how we apply design standards to residential structures. By great changes, I mean we don't get to anymore. But for now, triplex and quadplexes that are more than three stories in height, we may now apply our design standards to. So this has been a concession from the General Assembly as part of session law 2449. So those are set down in new standards on Page 429, and your design controls on Page 84. Is that any standard, any type of housing? So duplex, triplex, quadplex, and that's it. So we, you know, we're applying basically our multifamily design standards to those structures, okay? If, by the way, you're two stories or one story in height, we may not apply our design standards. So. Number four, solar farm decommissioning plan. 202358 came out of the General Assembly last year. Basically, what this requires is anybody who operates a solar farm, your U standards are on Page 456, has to first go through a decommissioning plan approval by DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality. They must also post a performance guarantee with the state to decommission the facility should it ever be decommissioned. So we've incorporated a recognition of applicants needing to furnish evidence of compliance with DEQ's decommissioning plan and posting of the financial security. We don't have any involvement in that. This is all done at the state level, okay? This is one that made your engineering department very unhappy, and I'm sorry. Session law 202449, the state has imposed limitations on local governments in terms of your ability to regulate surface paving and surface paving geometry in driveways and parking lots, for better or for worse. If an applicant uses NC DOT standards for paving strength or thickness or what have you, then you're going to have to go along quietly whether you have standards for it or not. Further, an applicant who brings forward stamped, sealed letter from a professional engineer gets to use whatever paving standards they'd like to have, as long as the engineer has stamped and sealed those plans, okay? So you are preempted with respect to that issue.
I'm assuming that extends to everything from basic grading to poured concrete?
Yes, sir. I think it's primarily about surfacing, but yes.
Right. It's just impervious. Impervious issues, impervious for your impervious standards?
This is like paving thickness.
Okay. It's not for impervious.
No, 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 it isn't. This is for how driveways and parking lots are paved and configured, okay? We still have control over width, placement, throat depth, that sort of thing, but the paving material that's used, the number of lifts that are applied, the technical aspects to the surfacing, it's out of our hands now, okay? Session law 202363 allows farms to have farm signs in the state right-of-way. So any NC DOT road that is in your jurisdiction will accommodate a farm sign during farm season, whenever that is. We don't know. It's not spelled down, spelled out in the statutes, but essentially, these farm signs are now exempt from our regulations. Now, that doesn't mean you can have a farm sign on a city street right-of-way. This is an NC DOT street, okay? Session law 202449 preempts local government's adoption of various different fire codes. There'll be a new fire code that comes out, I believe, in September of this year. It'll be a uniform fire code that is applied consistently across the state, and this preemption is in anticipation of that. Every local government will be operating out of the same fire code going forward. 2449, performance guarantees. Couple of changes here. If an applicant who has a performance guarantee, recall that's money that's put up in lieu of providing required improvements, whether that's roads or landscaping or what have you. If somebody who has a performance guarantee requests an inspection, that inspection must be granted in 30 days. If they complete the work and it's to the city's satisfaction, the city must release the performance guarantee in 30 days. If the applicant produces a stamped, sealed letter from a PE that says they have met the city's standards, the city must release the performance guarantee within 30 days. This will likely go to litigation because it puts the PE in the driver's seat in terms of determining whether or not that applicant conformed with your standards. So you may find yourself at a place where your staff says they have not met the standards, the outside PE says they have, and we go from there. Couple other things. Stormwater control maintenance. Stormwater control measures are the only thing that you can have a maintenance warranty for over time, okay? And it used to be 25% of the cost of the installation. That's been reduced to 10%. Also, the city used to hold those stormwater control measure funds, those maintenance funds. You may no longer. An applicant may hold those funds now. If an applicant requests that those funds be refunded to them, you must comply, okay? So not a lot of great news out of John Street this year, and much more to come. It's even worse than what we've talked about tonight, but it hasn't been adopted yet. Let's go on to the next slide. Okay, so that was our session law change. Let's talk about some of the basic changes to standards. Open space. We are suggesting an alternative when multifamily use has active recreation. The current standards require 50 feet between off-site adjacent residential and active recreation. Staff would like to suggest the ability to do a type C buffer instead of, or as an option, instead of the 50-foot separation requirement. So that's set down for you on Page 427. More changes with fencing. We've gone around with fencing. Almost every time we have amendments, we deal with fencing. This time is no different. Number one, want to allow fencing without a principal use so that someone can fence vacant property that does not have a principal use. Keeps people off of it. They may want to store something there, et cetera. So allowing fencing without a principal use. Clarifying fence height on lots of record. Here in Burlington, we have a, keep going back. One more. There you go. Thank you. We have some provisions that allow existing lots of record to have reduced setbacks. On their long sides, fence heights can be taller in these reduced setback areas. So this isn't a change, but staff wanted to clarify this for applicants. Finally, we're back with alternatives to finished side requirements. Current standards require fences that face streets to have the finished side outwards. This has created great problems across the community as people have tried to grapple with how to comply with this. In some instances, there's not enough physical room to get to the fence to turn the, to turn it so that it's facing out properly. In other instances, you can't see it because there's another fence or something that intervenes the view, and so there's a call for some common sense. Page 4-74 is our approach. We would suggest that essentially people be given two choices. If you have a fence that is within 50 feet of a right-of-way and is visible from that right-of-way, that you either, one, craft it so that the finished side faces out, like you see in the picture on the page there with the letter A, or that you include evergreen shrubs, that you screen it instead of having it be structured with the finished side out. And we're hopeful that this will, this body passed this revision last time around. City Council did not, and we're going back to ask for it again because staff is continuing to have problems with the ability to comply with this standard. So this is the suggested change. This is very similar to what we talked about two years ago, maybe three. It's been a while. Some of you probably weren't on the board then, but just a kind of common sense provision for this fence appearance. Let's go ahead and move on. Landscaping. When we've got perimeter or streetscape buffers that are part of subdivisions or large multi-lot developments, requiring that those perimeter buffers be on landscaping easements. Your staff suggested this, and it was a great suggestion. I'm surprised that we've functioned as long as we have without that basic standard. So these landscaping easements help ensure that people don't go on to those landscape areas and cut them down. It also makes sure that we've got access to them to maintain them. Design. We have in our commercial building standards, our design standards for commercial development, we have requirements for the primary building wall articulation, design features that make these building walls more attractive. There's about seven different options that you can use to meet the standard. One of those options is a green wall, planted wall. The current standards require 40% of that primary building wall facade area to be green wall. Nobody's used it. We'd really like it if people used it. So we're going to try to make it less onerous by reducing it from 40% to 10% in the hopes that somebody will take advantage of this, and we can begin to get some examples of it for use in subsequent developments, okay? Signage. We don't allow signs that move here in Burlington. You probably know that. We also have an exemption for signage on cars. So guess what? We've got flags and banners on cars. So staff would like to stop having moving flags on cars, and that's what Page 598 is intended to limit. We are also recognizing that construction sites need additional supplemental signage. Go here, choat construction. There's the entrance. Go over there for your concrete spoils. So supplemental signage on construction sites, they're able to surpass the maximum number during construction. After construction, they have to back in compliance with the supplemental sign standards, okay? So lighting. We have lighting heights that are 30 feet, 15 if you're in pedestrian areas, and there's a request on the table for us to consider on larger industrial sites, specifically those sites of 100 acres or more, to, in the LIMI and HI districts or conditional industrial, to have light heights that exceed 30 feet, up to 50 feet in height for vehicular areas and 30 feet in non-vehicular pedestrian areas. This is in recognition of, these sites tend to be large. They tend to have a lot of truck movement that happens in the evening. They need to be well lit, and it's easier for them to meet the lighting standards with a taller standard, a taller lighting post or pole. So we're suggesting that this be explored only for the largest sites in the industrial districts. Shade trees. We really like shade trees, and we'd like to have more of them. In response to that, we're suggesting the tree root zones, the critical root area of a tree, the land area below the crown of the tree be credited as active or urban open space set aside. So in hopes that, we're encouraging people to save that area as part of their open space. We've also included some new sustainability incentives for shade trees along greenways, multi-use paths, sidewalks, et cetera, on Page 7-57. So shade trees, we like them. We'd like to have more of them, and we want to make that easier for people to accomplish. Okay, some clarity improvements very, very quickly. Believe it or not, even though this ordinance has been around for six years, there were three instances of the word "town" where we were supposed to say "city." So still coming up with typos low these many, many years later. We needed some additional clarity on what constitutes a new application. Recall that in Chapter 2, if an application is denied, it has to, there's a time limit for when it can be brought back, and it has to be different, okay? If you want to bring it back within a year. Same application a year later, if you want it being back sooner than a year, it has to be a different application. What does that mean? What does different mean? That's what this clarity on what a new application means on Page 2-14. Some adjustments to the final plat procedure, Page 238, that just recognizes some additional review by other review authorities. GIS folks would like some G I S folks would like some additional clarity about G I S mapping, et cetera. There are a handful of changes with respect to the special flood hazard overlay zoning district, specifically the effective date of the last adoption, some cross-references and a new definition on page eight dash eighty. Another minor clarity. We have in the current standards, a use called auto sales or rental. Staff would like that to be and/or rental. So that change has been made various places throughout the ordinance. G I S would like a unique A D U. street address, an accessory dwelling unit needs to have its own unique street address for purposes of public safety. Maximum fire hydrant distance and paving standards in bungalow courts and pocket neighborhoods. These are smaller neighborhoods between four and twelve houses. They're intended for the homes to be close together and to have some common area and to share driveways, which are all wonderful things. However, the fire department has some concerns about fire safety and therefore wants to do two things. One, no home in a bungalow or pocket neighborhood can be more than a hundred and fifty feet from a fire hydrant. It's usually five hundred. In this instance, it's a hundred and fifty. Two, they want all the roads to be twenty-four feet wide, okay? And there's limitations on making sure that they're paved, all weather surfaces, whether that's concrete, asphalt, pavers, et cetera. So this is something that the fire department has requested for the sake of public safety. We have now some provisions for how parking standards are determined for unlisted uses. Remember, we've got a big use table in Chapter Four that lists a lot of uses, however, new uses come along all the time. The current standards allow the planning director to determine what is the parking standard for an unlisted use. Staff would like that to read transportation director. We've supplemented and made uniform the chair and vice chair language for planning and zoning and H P C. so that those elements stay the same, that there won't change, any change to y'all's life, there's still a chair and vice chair elected each year. That won't change at all, it's just uniformity to the standards. Finally, another piece of clarity, and it's the last one, is just recognizing that the technical review committee gets involved and provides comments on concept plans associated with conditional rezonings. Okay, two new uses. One, it's actually two uses, but I'm treating it as the first one. We are suggesting adding indoor and outdoor shooting range standards, okay? So an indoor shooting range is a place, does just what it sounds. People go there and practice pistols, practice bow and arrow. We would suggest that this be a conditional use only allowable, you know, in the conditional business, the conditional industrial, and through a P D. or P D. D. zoning district designation. Outdoor shooting range, just like indoor except outside, only permissible in conditional industrial. And you see the standards here that we've set down, they're focused on safety, they're focused on noise, they're focused on making sure that if there's anything else that happens, that there be ample parking, et cetera. So those are the standards that we've set down for these two different uses. There are also parking standards, one space for every two hundred square feet, plus additional parking for other retail activities, et cetera. Finally, we've set down some new definitions for these use types, okay? So that is our outdoor shooting range. We're almost done, guys. Outdoor storage uses. There's a suggestion that outdoor storage be allowed to have a retail sales component as an accessory. So that means that you can have some limited retail sales as part of your outdoor storage use, provided the outdoor sales area complies with the general standards that are applicable to all accessory uses, okay? They're de minimis in size, they're less impactful in scope, et cetera, et cetera, and that they follow the current outdoor display sales applied for other kinds of retail activities that happen outdoors, okay? So we're just sort of being consistent here. My guess is there are some outdoor storage uses that probably have a sales component and finding a way to accommodate that within the storage area. So that's that change. That's it. How about that? That was pretty fast. Do you guys have any? I know I've gone through this very, very quickly. Do you guys have any questions?
Forty-two D., forty-two F., forty-two G.
What pages are those?
Outdoor shooting ranges.
Okay, let's go back and look. There you go.
One qualified individual in the sponsoring club shall be certified for shooting range supervision. Why?
So that we are making sure that proper safety provisions are followed.
Derived from what?
Assumedly, they would have some sort of evidence or testimony that's made available as part of their application, that they have qualified personnel on site to protect safety.
Not enough to define it. Forty-two G., no individuals under the age of eighteen are permitted on the range during any practice or qualification firearms unless such individuals participating in an organized and properly supervised event being conducted on site by law enforcement personnel. I trust my ten-year-old with a gun more than I trust most cops with a gun.
So I'm sensing that you would, you'd like to see G. removed.
Or modified to allow minors with the supervision of their guardian.
Okay. Okay.
That's a recommendation. And was there a recommendation on the other standard, or just you want clarification on that?
I would like some clarification on that because that's a, what that statement refers to is what's commonly known as an R S O., Range Safety Officer. There are dozens of applications, qualifications, some of them are worth no more than the piece of paper that they're printed on, whereas others have actual value. That's a very broad statement and can be taken very broadly by whoever may start an outdoor shooting range.
Do you have a suggestion about how we might make that either more strict, restrictive? Our intention here was to make sure that if there's outdoor shooting going on, that there's somebody on the site who is mindful of safety. Do you have some suggestion about?
Who needs, what do they need to hold to be there?
My suggestion would be to have an insurance requirement for liability because there is no liability insurance that will insure a range without a properly certified R S O.
Okay. So evidence of insurance. Okay.
Charlie, I got a question about while you were on this. What organizations certify?
There's several. N S S F. is one, N R A. is another, there's a handful of others. You can do a twenty-second Google search and come back with about a half a dozen. Some municipalities will offer very similar R S O. training through their law enforcement division if they have that type of support, but not everybody does.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
The only other question I had was on the fencing. That is, I understand the need for that, but to define the type of fencing, we might want to broaden that because it is...
Can you?
Are you referring which?
I mean, forty-two, sorry, yeah, forty-two C.
That's it.
The range should be enclosed by a six-foot chain link fence.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, I thought you were, I thought you...
Still, we're still...
No, no.
Still on fire, sorry, sorry, my bad.
You're not getting me off of the Bill of Rights that quick.
For what it's worth, this use is listed as prohibited use in the ordinance right now.
I know, that's why, if we're talking about adding it, we need to do it the right way.
So we need to go forward, so that the standards come back?
It's page four dash fifty-two, if that helps.
Oh, you're talking about these specific standards?
Keep truckin'.
Keep going. Keep going. There you go.
Right there.
Okay.
So the chain link fence item with a lockable gate at the entrance, I do understand that and I very much like that idea. However, to put a six-foot chain link fence around ten acres of property or more is prohibitively expensive, and I would challenge anybody to find a blank ten-acre piece of land that they could put a fence like that around in Burlington to start a shooting range.
I'll defer to y'all. I, a fence around an outdoor shooting range is not uncommon.
I, yeah, I'm not saying we shouldn't have it, I'm just saying I don't know if we need to necessarily limit it to a specific height and type of fence. Maybe broaden it a little bit to, you know, other types of security fences possibly.
Could you, like what? I mean, let's talk about height. What might be your suggestion for height?
I mean, typically five to seven feet. We've got a seven-foot max anyway, don't we?
Yeah, sometimes it can go to eight, but five to seven, okay. And as an alternative to chain link?
I have seen thicker gauge meshroar before, but it doesn't work out well. There are other security fences out there that I'm not as well versed in, but I don't like the idea of limiting it to specifically chain link.
Okay.
I mean, in theory, what if somebody wanted to put an even nicer type of fence?
Right. If you have somebody who comes in and they build, say, an outdoor range that could be compared to, say, the range at Ballantyne in Charlotte in an outdoor capacity, they would not want a six-foot chain link fence. They would want a brick wall or a nicer wrought iron fence.
Or even you could have a mixed use of fences too.
Right.
This would limit it that.
So, okay.
And would this be a perimeter-only fence, or would it be only around the shooting area? I'm assuming it's meaning to be a perimeter fence, but in my experience, it would not necessarily have to be for an outdoor range.
It's drafted, it's intended to be the range where active firing takes place. It's not intended to be a fence around the parking lot or around the, you know, the building, if you will, where you go in and check in and so forth, so.
Might want to put some detail in that then, because you'll have people who would start a range here if they could find the land for it inside of the city limits, who immediately would read that and not want to start the range, thinking they would have to build a perimeter fence, which is, I'm assuming into the six-figure range for ten acres.
Okay. All right, so I have a, I have a follow-up to ask about the fence stuff because our discussion led us in this direction of, well, what if we want to put a masonry wall, or what if we wanted to have, you know, something made out of gold? So it's not just that your suggestion in terms of fencing material wasn't because chain link was cost prohibitive, it was maybe somebody wants to do something better than chain link, whatever that might be. Okay, okay.
I think also like a mixed use as well, like not limited to just one style. Like what if somebody wanted to put a brick wall on the front and chain link down the side?
Okay.
Or have a hard rail access gate to the entrance to the shooting area and chain link the rest of the shooting range.
Forty-two B. addresses somewhat the location of where your fencing ought to be.
Sure. Well, nothing I'll mention, I mean, you know, obviously it's part of the conditional zoning, you know, there's going to be a concept plan and there's going to be, you know, review and discussion with this body, review and discussion with the elected officials as it goes forward. So I think there's still ample opportunity for people to, you know, to bring forth suggestions and revisions. But I definitely, we'll go in and do a little bit more research on these fence options. I understand what you're saying. We'll look at what is customary in North Carolina for outdoor shooting ranges in terms of fence heights.
So going to the next one, the indoor shooting range, that one's a little bit more normal, but forty-three F., what are we considering noise attributed to operations?
I would say that would be discharge of firearms.
How are we defining noise off-site?
That is a matter for the city code of ordinances and y'all's noise provisions that are enforced by your police department.
So the definition that would apply here to forty-three F. would be our current definition of noise ordinance?
Likely so.
So, if you can't tell, I shoot quite a bit.
I don't know what would give that away.
I've never been to an indoor range where I couldn't stand outside of the facility just off their parking lot and still hear it to some extent.
I'm pretty sure that's going to be a real problem for the neighbors.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's, if you're in a house or in your car, you can't hear it, right? But you can still hear that dull thud, right? No matter how thick their insulation is, no matter how good their soundproofing is, you get a hundred and sixty-five decibel or a hundred and twenty-five decibel, and it's a concussion, and it's a, somebody's in there shooting a forty-four Magnum or fifty-eight, you hear it, you feel it, there's nothing you can do about it. You feel it through the ground.
Do you have any suggestions about what we do with forty-three F.?
Just make it consistent with the current noise ordinance?
I would, yeah, I would say that for sure. At least make reference to it there.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay. Excellent.
So basically, you'd be saying the use shall be configured such that noise attributed to operations inside the building are audible on off-site areas within the current noise ordinance of the city of Burlington?
I think what we would probably say is that use shall be operated in accordance with the noise provisions in the city code ordinances. Okay? Great stuff.
We could vote in favor of these provisions, the changes.
Yes.
With the anticipation of future changes coming along, that would fit what Charlie would suggest.
Right, so how, yeah, what often happens is we go over material with you guys, you raise comments, we include those comments in the work session and in the public hearing along with adjustments that we've made based on the changes that you guys recommend. Often, the chair is present and is the representative of the planning and zoning board, at least that's how it's been passed.
What does that go to the work session?
Let's see, this goes to work session on four-fourteen, April fourteenth. And we'll have, I don't know exactly when the packet dates are for that, but the red lines will be prepared in advance of that, and I'm sure staff can provide those to you. We're happy to work with you guys to, you know, I'm mostly interested in hearing your thoughts about the changes, because we've advertised this as it is, so that needs to roll forward, but we put slides together showing, planning and zoning board said this, and, you know, getting y'all's thoughts on that would be, you know, what we're interested in so that we can present that accurately to the elected officials, and then they'll make a decision about what they want to do. Okay? Last slide.
I have one question before, there's a motion. Last one.
This, yeah, that one. In any case, you know, like I said, this will be going for council work session on the fourteenth, and then the public hearing will be on May sixth, and...
Regarding the lighting provision, staff would like, planning and zoning commission, would like to consider adjusting that instead of a hundred acres to reduce that to seventy-five.
Okay.
It's just hard to anticipate a site that is exactly one number or another, but with the reductions to seventy-five, we feel like that will get more appropriately for what we anticipate seeing for these types of uses.
Admissible to planning and zoning?
Absolutely.
All right, so we would be reducing that from a hundred acres down to seventy-five. Okay, very good.
I got a question about the moving signage on vehicles. Can you explain that one?
Wish I could. I can attempt to. I'm not your enforcement people, so what I understood was happening was, is, the way that the signage standards are configured, we exempt signage on vehicles, okay? So people might have painted on their vehicle, this is, you know, the Code Wright Mobile, or this is the Exterminator, or whatever, okay? Some folks are parking vehicles and then hanging flags, or hanging pennants, or hanging, moving articles on the cars and saying, oh, signs on vehicles are exempt from your sign regulations, so it's okay for me to have this moving sign on a car. And that's what gave rise to this change. I can give you any specific examples of where that's taken place, but stat, your enforcement staff would like to clarify that you can't put a pennant, or a flag, or anything, any sort of moving signage on a vehicle.
Does this extend beyond businesses to all private citizens?
No, this is just for commercial operations.
And as I read it, with respect to the location of the vehicle, it's got to be located on-site.
Not necessarily.
Close to the site.
Not necessarily.
Talking, you know, commercial vehicle representing a, a business moving through town?
So, this is a stationary vehicle, it's not a, it's not a moving vehicle, but, you know, I think it's a bit of a gray area about whether or not it's on-premise or off-premise. We've, we've structured the standards to be more permissive, because I drive my work vehicle home, right? And so, I need to be able, you know, I, if, if my, if my company name is painted on the side of my car and I need to drive my car home, then we can't say, oh, well, you can't, you know, in residential districts, you can't have a sign on a vehicle. So, we've tended to be the more permissive, but the intention of the standard is, this vehicle is parked, it's not moving, and it's parked, you know, hopefully, in the location where the business operates, though, to be honest with you, sometimes I don't think that happens.
So, are they, I, I'm assuming enforcement is advocating to make people get a permit to hang a flag on a tow truck?
They are making the hanging of moving, of, of moving signage on a parked vehicle as something that's a violation of the ordinance. Now, a flag is a slightly different matter.
Well, I mean, a flag or a pennant, say it's advertising a business, right?
Right, right.
Tell the company, hang it off the back of their truck in their own parking lot.
Yes, this would, that would be a moving sign, which would be a violation of the sign regulations, and so, yes, they would like to clarify that that's not permitted.
I'm bored with that one.
Have I, have I characterized it correctly?
But it's okay if it's moving?
I don't think that the enforcement people are enforcing the ordinance on moving vehicles.
But the ordinance exists.
But the ordinance does exist and has to be applied. And so, if I don't get a sign on my building, but my next-door neighbor has a car in his parking lot, and there's a flag on it that's moving, or pennants that are moving, then what do you say to the person who doesn't have the car? You know, he gets a moving sign, but I don't, because I put mine on the car?
I think these are more, I think the, the issue that is trying to be addressed with this provision is, is not necessarily like a, a flag, it's those movable.
Windsock things? The windsocks?
Windsocks, yeah.
Windsock things, where those are prohibited within the city, and I think there's instances where they're being put on vehicles.
Like on a truck bed or something?
Or advertisement, so it's not permitted as a regular type of sign. There's clarification that it cannot be put on a vehicle that's also located on the business property.
Okay.
April 14.
Good comment. So, so, suggestions about, you know, outdoor shooting range changes, evidence of insurance requirements, minors being able to attend with a parent or guardian, a little bit of extra research on the fence material, allowing multiple materials, allowing something that's a higher quality, looking into fence heights, the more consistency with the noise ordinance in terms of the indoor shooting range, and then we'll note that there were questions about the signage as well.
Witnesses are people.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, I thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Chair.
We have legislation coming, we haven't talked much about 382, and I'm not going to spend much time about it today, except to say you can't downzone property without prior consent, property owners. Okay, so that means you can't take text amendments and create non-conformities or reduce the range of allowable uses without getting consent first, okay? So, that's a very impactful bill. We have this, this legislative season, there's a bill that is trying to abolish parking minimums altogether, so no more minimum parking standards, no more standards for parking space sizes. That bill is making its way through the General Assembly.
Who came up with that?
I, you'll have to ask the General Assembly. There is also a bill to abolish E T J, which will be moving, moving through the legislature right now, so we'll see where that bill goes. There's a handful of others, but those are the, the biggies right now, 382, the E T J bill and the parking bill, okay? So, we'll, and we'll keep you guys appraised as we, kind of apprised as we move through that stuff, okay?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
No, you have a.
Oh, you? I said anything, I didn't remember.
On this side, we are asking.
Oh, would you have to vote on this? Okay.
Yes, it's standard, this is just like our regular rezonings or legislative matters that come in front of the planning and zoning commission, where we are asked to make a recommendation or not to the city council.
Is there a motion to, to accept? Let's figure out what the, somebody make a motion of some sort to accept these comments.
I move that we accept. Strike that. I move we accept the changes as written, and annotate them with our comments to the city council at their next planning session.
There's a motion, is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second. You want to roll call the vote, or can we just say aye?
Um, when do you roll call?
All right, roll call the vote, please.
Chair, for that.
Approve.
Vice Chair Beasley?
Approve.
Member Rome?
Approve.
Member Mills?
Approve.
Member Stradigini?
Approve.
And, member Rayner?
Approve.
And, member Hill?
Approve.
Okay, thank you very much. That covers all of the items that we had for public, our public meeting, discussion.
Well, is there a motion to adjourn?
That's a move.
Second.
Done.